They could possibly apply to their, to their garbage fee. They're not getting a free can.
So about fifty?
Yes, about that on average.
I mean, it's not too many.
Not too many.
Doing an outburst for extra bags, I mean.
I don't see why we couldn't give them the money back. We've got free for their purpose, we've got. That's kind of your, we didn't make a decision on that, just waiting to hear from you all if you want it.
I'm honestly thinking they'd refund it if you guys will pay with it.
What's the price?
They say about fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks?
Yeah, for ninety bucks.
Ninety, well, I don't know, the rest of us didn't want us to make a comment, but I'd like to see how many, I mean, what, whether the numbers we're talking about here, because I don't want to okay something. And it'd be, you know, a bunch of people have it and we're out to quite a lot of money on this.
They said only fifty people.
Fifty on average. I thought I said fifty on average to purchase those cans. Now fifty residents, so only fifty residents in the whole city? Oh, okay, okay. That's not a big deal.
It purchased.
Okay.
I think maybe give them a refund or, or a partial refund, I'd be down either way, either fifty dollars back or forty dollars back. I think, I think forty is kind of fair to the extent that they haven't had the cans longer than anybody else. Some of them have had the cans for, you know, a year longer than anybody else. But, I appreciate the reason, I'd be happy, yeah. I'll vote, I'll vote for a refund.
You want it? The program?
Pay as you throw programs. It's gonna be interesting, ask me six months from now.
Maybe I'll be here.
It definitely has benefits for recycling. The concern I have is that it does not pay for the service. And long-term, I see costs going up.
Right.
Employee costs going up, equipment purchases going up. And even though you're, you're increasing recycling, it does not address our long-term costs going up and eventually paying for the service. Like most communities that we've talked to, they've priced the program to cover the cost of the service. And this does not do that, so it lends itself to be looked at in the future as pension, medical, all these issues hit. But this is not going to be a dead issue in the future.
With the, and the response I'll make to that, the reason I don't want to get into the personal fit for that. With the reason I brought up the private discussions regarding the current fee. Which is to make a very practical point, that the current fee is, is intentionally low. And, and was intentionally and overtly designed to be increased in the future as, as deficits increase. And I, you know, I hear, I hear what Jeff's saying, but, uh, that actually, I think that really kind of cuts both ways. If we were to charge enough to cover the full cost of collection, if the fee were overtly by ordinance intended to cover the, the actual, were tied to the actual cost of collection. Then, that actually requires the fee to be adjusted and raised a little bit over time, for a few different reasons. As any look, and other communities talked about doing your five-year projection in relation to covering the full cost of collection. Because let's say, uh, let's say, let's say right now we were offering two sizes. Let's say we were offering one size for ten dollars and another size for five dollars. And let's say that, that the program works the way it's intended to, and over time, people, uh, choose for the cheaper, you know, op, keep opting for the cheaper option. That inherently, I mean, the, the point of any pricing incentive is that you're incentivizing people to give you less money. I mean, that is the incentive, is, you know, the public gives. You're giving the public an opportunity to give the city less money, uh, if they, if they choose to mitigate their behavior, right? As in, they can either pay for the large can, or they can recycle more, pay for the small can. And the whole purpose, the way, the way paper increases recycling is by encouraging people to give them the option to lower their bills. Or in this case, lower and even eliminate them. One point, and the reason cities suggest doing a five-year projection, is because if the program works really well, then your revenue drops. I mean, that's the, that's what it's intended to do, it's designed to bring less revenue over time. And so, cities are encouraged to implement the fee pretty high, if they're trying to cover the full cost of collection. They're encouraged to implement the fee, uh, higher than necessary at first, so that when things line up with the five-year projection, then you're covering the full cost of five years. Once you realize the initial cost savings, I mean, that, you know, we've got these, we've got these estimates here that show the overall cost of collection going down over time. It's going down over five years, decreasing over five years. And those decreases will be in place forever, but after a point, inevitably, the cost of collection is going to start going back up again. I mean, at some point, fuel prices are going to start to impact that, you know, cost of living, inflation. At some point, we're going to realize all the recycling we can. And then even though we're saving five hundred thousand dollars a year, every year ongoing, uh, at some point, increases are going to be inevitable. And that's true for the flat fee, that's, that's true for no fee using taxes, the cost of collection. It has a natural curve up over time. What paper does is it, is it, I guess I can, if I could, if I could do a visual real quick. If this, if this chart, I'm doing fake crap here. If this chart represents just the natural increase in the cost of collection due to inflation, due to gas prices, due to all that fun stuff. That's the natural progression over time. What paper does is despite the initial cost, you know, front cost, but then it actually drops, then it actually drops the cost. Until you hit your maximum recycling numbers you're going to hit. And then it starts creeping back up the way it always, it always would creep up. So yeah, the costs are inevitably going to, you see the visual I'm producing here? The costs are inevitably, in time, going to increase. That's a given for any city service. That's, that's just an economic principle. As long as the economy's growing, costs are going to increase. The point is, you know, paper kind of resets that threshold, so you have these ongoing cost savings to go along with it. So it takes, you know, it takes a lot longer to meet, it takes a lot longer for the program to cost as much as it will program, never again costs as much as it would otherwise without paper. I mean, here's the, I guess here's the, here's the philosophical point I'm making. You know, right now, folks pay sixty dollars a year. And there's no system in place to limit long-term costs in any way. So right now, people pay, pay sixty bucks a year, and there's nothing to keep costs increasing from where they are now, over time, forever and definitely. We have an opportunity to decrease people's bills right now, to decrease ninety-seven percent of the community's bills right now, which I think is a good thing to do in and of itself. And to put a serious dent in those long-term costs. And even if they start creeping up again eventually, it'll be with a lower base, a lower threshold. I mean, if we can, if we can save the public three hundred thousand dollars now, and save ourselves two hundred thousand dollars a year ongoing. I mean, that's a net, that's a net boon to the community of five hundred thousand dollars annually. And five hundred thousand dollars doesn't, I mean, on one hand, that's not a lot of money, on the other hand, that's a lot of money. I mean, five hundred thousand dollars a year is no joke.
I guess, I guess another point. If we just contract out. I know, and I know it's also brought up, but why wouldn't that be brought up again in five years? We'll just contract that, we won't even deal with it, we'll just get rid of the whole department, there's our cost savings.
We would, we would save a lot of money by, by not picking up trash anymore. To an extent, it wouldn't actually save our citizens that much money, because they all had to pay. Our citizens pay for garbage collection one way or the other. Right now, city residents already pay for the county's garbage collection. So if we shift, if we shift our city burden off of the county, I mean, not only, because I think that obviously destroyed our relationship with the county. But that's, that's just gonna, I mean, that just means that people's county taxes are going to go up instead of the city taxes. It doesn't actually, that would actually save our.
They can't leave taxes.
That's my point. That's my point. I mean, as in, people's combined city-county taxes right now, people's combined city-county taxes, plus the, you know, the garbage, the garbage sheet is in place. Right now, that pays for all the garbage collection in the county. When you add, you know, when you combine it all together, right? So if we stop picking up garbage, if we stop picking up garbage at all, that doesn't change that big picture. It's still going to cost the same amount to pick up all of the trash in the county. I mean, we can ship the burden away from city government to county government. But that doesn't actually impact the, the people who give each of our entities money in way of taxes. Because folks are still going to have to give, provide the same amount of taxes and fees to cover the same amount of collection. It would save, it would, it would, it would on paper look like we're saving city government money, but it wouldn't save any of our constituents' money. It wouldn't save, it wouldn't actually save anybody's tax dollars, it'd just ship the tax dollars from the city to the county, I mean, which is.
But if you say that, okay, we implement this program, everybody gets cans, uh, two years from now, city commission comes in, uh, we already got cans in place, why not? With the county taking over.
It's a city commission's garage.
Yeah. But that's true for anything.
So what did we really spend? We spent two point one million dollars to save two hundred thousand dollars.
Two point one million?
Total cost initially, first year. With one point nine being the year three. And we're only saving two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, but, I mean, but the, yeah.
It doesn't make financial sense to me for taxpayers and for citizens to try to change a program which we all know will probably need changed again.
But, I mean, the numbers we have, I think, show pretty conclusively that as long as we're going to pick up garbage collection, it's the most cost-effective way to do it. I mean, I agree, it would be more cost-effective for the city to fire up the fireworks department and, and not pick up garbage anymore. If that's really what you're advocating, I'm sorry, that's.
I'm not advocating, I'm just saying it's a huge possibility.
But I guess the, I mean, that's true, I mean, anything.
But if you want to think long-term, that may be a long-term possibility that's going to happen.
Right, but that's true regardless of what we do with paper. So like, we can keep the current sixty-dollar flat fee and provide cans or not provide cans, that doesn't. The, I think, frankly, I think that would make a future commission even more likely to get out of the garbage collection business. This, this is the, in terms of our long-term costs, in terms of what it costs us to pick up garbage five years from now. The paper program is the only, only option on the table that we're aware of, other than getting out of the garbage business altogether and just turning it over to the county. But if we're going to collect garbage, this is the, paper is the only way to do it, uh, in a manner that actually reduces the long-term costs. I mean, unless I'm like, I mean, what, I mean, please, if, if you're, please.
We can all, we can, we can choose automation and start to reduce our costs. That's just, I, I think partially, if, if you could ask me, like, yes, Jeff, I think we, we can, my opinion is we take a partial approach. Continue on to try to automate and reduce our costs. Keep our, keep our five-dollar fee. And, and we, we can reduce our costs in the long run, because what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to, as, as, as vampire attrition's out, not, not laying off. But as they attrition out, we just, you know, we, we, we're set up to automate going forward, and we can attrition people out as they, as they voluntarily leave the city.
We've already recognized that manpower isn't a significant expense because of the negligible cost of inmate labor.
I'm sorry, what is that?
We've already, I mean, we've already established that, that, that manpower isn't, I mean, of all the numbers we're tossing around right here, that manpower isn't the most significant. I mean, it's significant.
You got on to one point one to point eight, I mean, that's, you know, three hundred thousand dollars reduction in five years.
I guess, I guess I'll just make two points, two points to that. One is, I mean, I understand that, you know, that we're all feeling a little pressure on this thing. You know, I can, I can, the amount, the amount of feedback we've gotten back, the amount of negative feedback we've gotten back, pales in comparison to the negative feedback we got on the, on the previous garbage fee. I mean, we had dozens and dozens of people come to public meetings, united in opposition to the sixty-dollar fee. We've had far fewer people come, come to our meetings to talk about this fee and almost half of them have been in support of it. So it's a mixed, it's a mixed reaction, but the idea that the public is united in opposition to this, it's just false, and we know that's false. I mean, we know that there are plenty of folks out there who support it. More to the point, uh, more to the point, most of us, I mean, most of us did campaign on this. And, and, you know, gave the public the same impression we supported this before the, the last election, and this was one of the larger issues in that election. I mean, I, I know for a fact that, that there are folks who are opposed to this fee and the paper. And we also know for a fact that lots of folks, uh, supported, and even supported us because. And, you know, folks, folks rarely, the fact, the fact that folks have even been coming voicing support for this is astonishing. Because, you know, in the time I've spent here, whenever a controversial issue comes up, all the opponents come, but you rarely ever see people coming, like, expressing positive support for something. I mean, so the fact that folks are coming and saying that, and, 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 you know. The fact, the fact, the fact that folks are coming out in support of it, I think, does demonstrate at least a degree of strong public support for this. And, and I do know that lots of folks are, they're not coming here and telling us that, like, folks are upset. But lots of folks are really happy that we're going to lower their bills and give them a rollout cart to boot. Lots of folks are really looking forward to not having a monthly bill anymore. I'd say maybe thirty percent of the public are looking forward to not having a monthly bill anymore. And lots of other folks are looking forward to having their bill reduced from sixty dollars to forty-eight dollars and getting a rollout cart in return. I mean, I've talked to lots of folks who are, who are excited about that. So yeah, we're going to upset folks. We're going to, we are going to upset some people if we, if we do what we talked about during the campaign. And if we follow through on the, the principles that we campaigned on, that is going to upset some folks. Now, a lot of the folks didn't vote for us in the first place, this is the way a representative democracy works. But I guarantee you all that a lot of the folks right now, who think they're about to get a, a cart, and who are about to get their monthly bills reduced or eliminated, would not be happy for us to turn it on. I would say, sorry, just kidding, we're actually going to keep your fee high. We're not actually going to reduce or eliminate your fee, we, we, we think more of you to be happy paying five dollars a month than, than four or zero. I mean, it just doesn't, I just don't think it pans out that way. I mean, I, I know, I've been on the record supporting this for, for a couple of years now. And, you know, all the folks who, who, you know, threatened, even last year and the year before, that they were going to see to it that I was never elected again because of this horrible idea. I mean, they had a chance to put their money where their mouth was. We had an election. I got more votes than anybody else, and I've been the most vocal supporter of this thing. And frankly, I think a lot of the folks that are, you know, a lot of the folks who have expressed opposition to this thing to me, have expressed opposition to the youngsters politically, uh, over the course of the, the past couple of years. And frankly, they're not going to start respecting us or liking us all of a sudden just because we, we buckle under pressure to them. We can't lose their support. But the folks who voted on us because of the stuff we talked about in the campaign, the folks who did support us, the folks who, who, who felt they were participating and had represented democracy by voting in the last election and by attending the public forums. The folks who we completely ignore, the folks who supported and do not this whole thing, if we ignore them and throw them under the bus, if you guys, we buckle under pressure from the folks who are opposed to all this. I don't think that's going to, you know, that's not going to sit people with a whole broad swath of the public, we do expect this to, uh. We do expect this to follow through on, on the stuff that they're talking about for, for well over a year now. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, we're going to upset, no matter what we do, no matter what we do. We can, we can go paper, that's going to upset some people. We can keep the sixty-dollar fee, and that's going to upset some people. Uh, we can get rid of these altogether and adjust taxes, AKA rate taxes, that's going to upset some people. The only decision we can make, the only decision we can make is not going to upset, well, and even this decision would upset lots of folks. But if we, we could get rid of the all together, we could not raise taxes, we could provide the carts, we could borrow a bunch of money and build a new swimming pool. I mean, we can be fiscally reckless and continue to drive long-term deficits, and continue to drive the kinds of problems that we're trying to address right now, and probably get away with it. That would probably satisfy a lot of people. And it'd make things even worse for future generations to deal with. But we would probably benefit politically in the near term. I don't think that's what people elected us to do. And we, you know, frankly, we all campaigned on being willing to make tough choices. Uh, listening to the public and, uh, making sustainable, long-term decisions.
And if you want to go on and say someone wants to buckle under pressure, that's fine, or not hold eighty percent of their phone calls that they've gotten from constituents. That's fine. If you care about your political career, that's fine.
I don't.
Great, I don't either, but I do care about people who live in this, in this city. And if our direct total labor cost is one point two million, and in five years, if we go automated, it's still eight point eight five.
Two hundred and forty-five thousand now.
Which is the same as going from two point one to in five years having one point six.
That's the, I mean, that's the point I keep making about the, I mean, somebody showed me that a community that implemented paper, and I only saw a fifty percent increase in their recycling. I hadn't seen it, we've seen lots of communities see, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty percent increases.
But we're not also really changing anything either, though, Commissioner Wilder, I mean, we're going to continue the full pickup. We're continuing four times a year pre-pickup. We're continuing yard waste, um, we got the bags we're going out with. Like I said, I mean, I can have a sixty-five dollar container, sure, it's saving me a dollar a month, but I don't have to use that recycled container. But it does allow the system to go automated and still save the same amount of money.
Yeah, I think this is, I think that the, a thirty percent increase in recycling rates is a much more accurate estimate than a fifteen percent. And of course, the incentive is here for people to recycle. I mean, this worth, this is worth thousands and thousands of other times in other communities. I mean, you're right, nothing forces people to recycle and waste less. But we do give people the opportunity to, to get rid of their monthly bills. But right, I mean, people can save money by doing it, we're not forcing them to save money by recycling more, we're just giving them a chance. But that's, that's a, that's a primary motivator of any, any, I mean, of any social movement, right? I mean, you make it cheaper for people to do something, people all of a sudden might not option more fueling. People can save money by recycling, we're not putting it on anybody's head, we're not forcing anybody to recycle. If you can make it where people can save money by doing it, people are going to do it. We've seen that happen time to time. And the, and the thirty percent estimate is a lot more reasonable than fifteen percent estimate. And I mean, you know, just look at those numbers, we're talking about, we're talking about, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year within five years. And that's ongoing savings, we're not talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Which is to see that we can, I mean, that's a whole one percent of our city budget that we can impact in the long term with this thing. I mean, alternatively, yeah, we can bring in more revenue, right? I guess, I guess, I guess my point is that the, you know, I realize that this fee could go in the future, it could. But a lot, if, if it does, it'd be with. A future commission is dealing with the garbage program that costs one point three six million instead of one point seven million. And well, and that's actually, and that's actually not fair, because I'd say, say that, uh, you know, any, any increases in terms of colas, in terms of, um, uh, you know, gasoline and tippings and stuff like that are only. You know, and any savings realized in those areas are compounded by paper. Or let me put it another way. A future commission is dealing with the garbage program that costs one point seven million dollars and a five-dollar-a-month flat fee is going to feel, is going to have a much greater incentive to raise that fee. Than a commission that only has expenses of one point three million. I mean, yeah, technically, the fee can go up, but if we're reducing the expenses of the program, that lessens the need for the fee to go up. Now, granted, a future commission can get greedy as they want, you know. I mean, let's, let's say we decide we want to waste another seven million dollars or whatnot on another couple, on another emergency operations center, because apparently we don't have enough in the country. But let's say, you know, I mean, let's say, let's say a future commission wants to spend, you know, way more money than we're bringing in in a given year, I mean, they can do that. There's not, we can do to stop them. But what we can do is hand them, is send them reduced expenses in the future and, and at least mitigate their perceived need to raise future taxes. I mean, or put it another way, if we keep the, this, this fee might go up a little bit in the future in time. It might, it might not, it's not supposed to cover the full cost of collection, so, uh, so it doesn't necessarily need to. But, I mean, the current fee, not only is it definitely higher than the paper fee already, so we're automatically starting off charging people more than paper. But it also has larger long-term cost benefit than the paper. We're charging, I mean, I mean, if the option is to charge, let's just say the average is the four-dollar a month, for the sake of comparison, I know it's variable. I mean, if the option is to charge fees at four dollars a month now, and have a garbage program that costs one point three million dollars in five years, as opposed to charging people five dollars now in a garbage program that costs one point, I mean, Stafford's saying one point seven. No, that's America, one point six, but the numbers, for Stafford, our current estimates are one point seven. But I mean, that's, I mean, that's just, that's just such a cut and dry math. I mean, charging people four dollars a now and having a program that costs one point three later is way more to citizens' benefit and the city's fiscal future than charging folks five dollars a month now and having a program that, that, that costs more in the long run. If we can save people money now and save the city money in the future, as opposed to charging people more now and having the program cost more in the future. That's just, I mean, that's short-term fiscally and long-term fiscally responsible. Those are pretty, I mean, they're pretty cut and dry numbers.
Who should make?
I don't know how I'll already keep debating this, this issue, but I think Commissioner Hayden touched on a point that I probably ought to emphasize as well. There's a time when we need to be leaders and do certain actions, there's also a time when we need to listen to our constituents. And I'm reminded of the, when, when Commissioner Hayden mentioned the amount of calls she'd had. It reminded me of the folks that have called, this is not an exaggeration, and I don't know if I'm only one of the ten people crying on the phone. But people who are elderly, especially females, have called frightened and in tears on this issue. I've never had people call with that type of fear in their voice on, on any of the issues. I've had them be angry about things, I've had them be concerned about, but, but not the kind of fear. And I think Commissioner Hayden makes a great point. Is the small difference that Commissioner Hayden pointed out worth putting certain, a segment of our community through this mental anguish and fear and concern over being able to, be able to maneuver a larger container that, as someone pointed out, just empty is heavy? Is that worth to, to our constituents? And I, and I know that some folks voted for folks because of circumstances, but at the time, I don't know that all this information was out there for, for people to really weigh that. was out there for, for people to really weigh that on, to really know exactly or understand. Some people may have, some people may not. The full issue, and I think one of the things I've brought up before initially was, I wasn't sure how I ended up voting on this issue. But after hearing people, elderly people, especially women, crying because they don't have anybody to help them get a large container to the curb, and then try to handle another one with their recycling, a big recycling container, I just, I think Commissioner Hiddon makes a great point. That's just not, is it worth that amount of money? And of course, $200,000 in the forehead or whatever the amount will end up being, we really don't know. And I think if you ask our staff, they don't really know what the projections are. They had to put numbers together so we could analyze them. But I think if Mayor, if we ask the city manager and ask the staff, those numbers are not as solid as, solid as we would like them to be. And I think, as Commissioner Hiddon has said, is it worth putting the, putting this much anguish on our constituency that's concerned about? And, and the other thing too is, as she said, what are we really changing? We're still, and other communities that do the Pay Per and some of them, I know have mandatory recycling. Not all, but some of them have mandatory recycling. That's true, right? So unless, and I've said it before, unless you make people recycle by having mandatory recycling, which I'm strongly against at this point, we don't know if they're going to recycle more enough. You know, we hope that they will, which comes back to, if, if we've got a budget item for us to sustainability coordinator that we're going to share with city and county and plan for, let that person make every effort possible to try to educate and do community outreach to get people to recycle more. And that will help us immeasurably with, with future cost on, on waste collection, if we can get people to do it, not further than.
Commissioner Turner, I just had a quick comment that, that the other option that was presented in the discussion was that, well, we'll just get the cans and do the-